And now I will be calling to order the regular meeting of the Board of Regents at 1:03 PM on Tuesday, April 16th. I will call roll to establish our quorum. Regent Kruhl.
Here.
Dr. Turner.
Here.
Regent Everett.
Here.
Dr. Adami.
Here.
Regent Garza.
Here.
Regent Loeb.
Here.
Dr. Babaly.
Here.
I'm Carol Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. Would you all please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Mr. Loeb, would you lead us in our pledge of allegiance?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And please join us as we read our Delmar College vision statement. "Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities." Thank you. Delmar College is streaming live audio and video from our Board of Regents meetings on the college's website in real time, with exception, a portion of the meeting, it may be considered a closed session by statute. We do have a public comment protocol that asks individuals to sign up on cards in the back. If you are signing up for a specific agenda item, I will call you at that time for that specific agenda item. But at this point in time, we do have an opportunity for general public comment, limited to three-minute time period for items not on our agenda. Is there anyone here for general public comment? And again, if you'd like to comment on an agenda item, please make sure you fill out a card. With that, we'll move on to our agenda, and we're going to begin with an announcement. Ms. Tammy McDonald.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to call up Lauren White. Thank you. I am pleased to announce that Lauren White has been appointed Chief of Police for Delmar College. She will lead the DMC Police Department and focus on the security of our students, employees, and visitors, and the development of the Police Department. Chief White has been with the college since February of 2014. She started in a part-time capacity in the Security Department. In December of 2015, she transitioned into full-time as Chief of Security, and most recently, she served as our interim Chief of Police. Since joining Delmar College, Chief White has been committed to the security of our college community and our mission. Chief White serves on several different teams and committees throughout the college, like our Incident Management Team, Emergency Operations Planning Team, and our student, they call it the BIT team, or Behavioral Intervention Team. Chief White previously retired from the Corpus Christi Police Department as a lieutenant with 29 years of service, but she has a combined over 39 years of service in law enforcement experience. Lauren has served on several local nonprofit boards. She holds an Associate's Degree in Business Administration from Delmar College, Bachelors in Criminal Justice from Corpus Christi State University. She has a Master in Counseling from A&amp;M Corpus Christi, and she also holds, she's a Licensed Professional Counselor. So please help me congratulate Chief White.
Chief?
Yes.
Chief?
Thank you all very much for your support. Congratulations, Chief White, and we're glad to take that interim out from in front of your title. Now we will move on with recognitions. Dr. Eskamia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to introduce the newest doctorate amongst our executive team, now Dr. Patricia Benavides Dominguez, who's joined us, our Vice President of Student Affairs. Dr. Patricia, as I refer to her often, completed her degree from Texas A&amp;M University, Corpus Christi, my alma mater, our fellow alma mater down the road here. Congratulations to those efforts. Do you'd like to say anything really quickly, Dr. Patricia?
Just thank you for the supportive environment, you know, the culture that is created here for all employees to, you know, pursue their educational pursuits, and that certainly wouldn't have been done without the leadership of Dr. Eskamia and many of my colleagues here that along the way have told me, keep going, don't give up, you know, read a couple of papers of mine, you know. Lenora, interviewed her for one of my papers, and I, but it all started with Dr. Eskamia calling me one day, and I thought he was going to call me, I thought he was, because usually he asks me for something. He says, and, uh...
Usually data, usually data.
He says, "Patricia, I need you, I know you're busy, and you've got a lot going on, but I need you to do one more thing." And I thought, okay, he's going to ask for an enrollment report or something. He says, "I need you to go get that doctorate." And so, here I am.
So you did.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now, dare I say, one of our favorite kinds of recognitions. I'm going to call on Dr. Halcom to introduce some of our students to us.
Madam Chair, Regents, Dr. Eskamia. I'm pleased to announce that Elizabeth Rockledge, a Delmar College Biotechnology major, earned first place for her poster presentation, "The Isolation and Characterization of the Bacteriophage Iraq", in the bacteriophages microbiology category during the competition at the American Society of Microbiology Texas Branch Spring State Meeting held in Cedar Hill, Texas in March. A bacteriophage is a virus that infects bacteria and replicates within the bacteria. It is used in research, as our student today can tell you, if you do have any questions about that. Overall, 88 presentations were given by postdoctoral graduate and undergraduate students representing 31 colleges and universities from across Texas. She earned the top prize among undergraduate students who presented research posters in the bacteriophage microbiology category. Ms. Rockledge vied for the award not only against three other Delmar College students, she also competed against 25 other students representing Baylor University, Tarleton State University, Texas A&amp;M College Station, Texas Christian University, and University of North Texas. Professor of Biotechnology Daisy Zhang served as her mentor. Dr. Zhang has worked with our biotechnology students for many, many years, taking them to competitions and providing internships at locations such as MD Anderson, Tammu Kingsville, just to name a couple. She has been committed to providing students with undergraduate research and preparation for transfer to universities, and they have been quite successful over the years. And of course, they're in the new biotechnology space at Osso Creek, so I know she loves that space. So I'd like you to please join me in congratulating Ms. Rockledge and her mentor, Dr. Daisy Zhang.
Daisy?
Thank you guys so much for this opportunity, and thank you, Daisy, for all of your help and mentoring. Thank you.
She didn't know she has to speak. So we've been very busy this semester, and on top of traveling, she's my teaching assistant, and she also is taking some hardcore chemistry class, right, biology? Yeah, that was my fault. But anyway, I will say something about Liz. From the point, she started with our brand-new campus, and then the program, only six months into it, she started to work on the undergraduate research project. And then eight months after, she won the first prize, which is not even this one we're recognizing. The one a little bit more local, she won the second place. And then this past March, she really just surprised everyone and grabbed our top prize. And then, one thing I like about her is she put all her effort into preparing for everything, a test, a presentation, research, and she practiced all the way to midnight, the day we were in the hotel before the presentation. And, you know, I love working with students like that. You know, it's a great chemistry. It's why we're, you know, we're choosing this particular position, particular career. So, again, thank you so much for recognizing both of us and some other students, and thank you for the great space Osso Creek has provided for the program. And then thanks for the Delmar Foundation Office to continue supporting our summer interns, and of course, administration support, Dr. Halcom, Dr. Sutherd, and our chairs, and everybody that, you know, the technicians, everybody that makes the summer internship possible for a community college like us, and that we can beat Baylor and whatever the top university that we compete with. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you for that continued great work, and Ms. Rochelle, it was glad to meet you, and we look, Rockledge, excuse me, we look forward to following your endeavors in the future. Our college president's report, Dr. Eskamia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a announcement. Matthew, if you can come up. Hurry. There you are. As you all know, we had a change in leadership due to a very exciting and, just exciting retirement for Mary McQueen and the foundation. But I'm here today to announce an appointment of the position for Vice President Development and Donor Advising, Mr. Matthew Busby. Matthew has been with the college since I had the notes, and I don't have...
Just over five years.
Just over five years. And Matthew started when he was 12, so he's only 17. Just kidding, just kidding. But Matthew is here and leading this charge. Matthew is a proven professional in the field of development, and was before we snatched him up, and I think he's in the year 16 or 17 or so with experience and so forth. He is a serious professional and well-beloved by our community. And he and his family have been here in the community and invested themselves, and I'm just here to say I'm so proud that he accepted this appointment, and with wholehearted support from the foundation, as well as his peers on the executive team, and certainly the donors that are out there that I've been talking to over the years. So, without further ado, help me welcome our new Vice President of Development and Donor Advising.
Well, I know we have a long meeting, but I did want to say thank you to Dr. Eskamia, and thank you for the Board of Regents. It's really a privilege to serve in this role. When I hear faculty and staff and students come up and talk about their dreams, right, and their programs, and a program of excellence or a program that's excellent but striving for even greater levels of excellence, oftentimes it comes down to that financial support. And the amazing thing Dr. Eskamia mentioned is that we have a wonderful group of community supporters, corporations, businesses, foundations, and our separate, but conjoined, if you will, Foundation Board of Directors is an absolutely phenomenal group of people that provides leadership and support on a volunteer basis, and I look forward to continuing to support all the programs and the faculty and staff and students. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Matthew.
Congratulations.
Next, and final, the final point, I'll be brief. Delmar College held the first Bridging Education and Business Luncheon in association with the Texas Association Business Foundation, Texas Association Community Colleges, Texas Workforce Commission, local employers, and certainly, Delmar College faculty, staff, and regent, Regents, because there were Regents that attended. It was very well-attended. It was a first of its kind in the state. We were their guinea pigs, they said, so, but they loved, they loved the product that was delivered. They were touting the high bar that was set in terms of cooperation between the various groups, employers, and state agencies, and faculty and staff. It was a wonderful event, and I want to thank Chair Scott for presenting that day. We talked about HBA and various other things, and how all these things, this confluence of legislation, policy, practical employment needs, and the like, all have come together to really solidify Corpus Christi as, if not the, excuse me, one of the epicenters of this very, very powerful economy that we have here in the state of Texas. So, that concludes my report. If there are any questions, I'm glad to answer.
Thank you very much, Dr. Eskamia.
Yes, ma'am.
We will move on to our staff reports, and we're first up is going to be an enrollment update. Dr. John Dehalcom and Dr. Leonard Rivera are going to present that update for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Regents, Dr. Eskamia. This morning, you reviewed the new House Bill 8 rules for funding based on performance outcomes as opposed to the input data that we've been used to, such as contact hours. Although we are transitioning away from contact hours, it's important to look at overall data illustrating the trends that we see at our college in the credit and continuing education arenas. Dr. Rivera and I will present headcounts, contact hours, enrollments for credit, and continuing education, in addition to top programs by award in both of those areas. First, let's take a look at the budget revenue. You saw this same slide in November of last year, and it's just a quick reminder of the sources for our funding. So we see that tuition and fees, about 20.1%, state appropriation, 16.9%, plus our state benefits contribution. So, we'll see what percentage with House Bill 8, if that will change very much this next year. So I'm going to go to the fall credit. I know the slides are a little flip-flopped here, I'm going to flip-flop on you. But anyway, the fall 2023 data showed a decrease of headcount when comparing fall of 2022 to fall of 2023. The headcount is unduplicated students. The decrease was in two categories, the credit and flex courses. Flex courses are courses that are not 16 weeks, so we have eight-week, 15-week as well. Continuing education had a slight increase, but overall, it was a 1.1% decrease. So we had a combined total of 12,724 students. 9,720 credit, 2,680 continuing education. And so the continuing education numbers are coming from the first quarter. They don't do the semester, they do more of a quarter system. So, collecting data and reporting it gets a little tricky there. And let me go back to the spring slide, and good change here. One-year change, about 2.8%. These are preliminary numbers, remember? So there could be a few changes once everything's been certified completely. So the spring, once again, shows a slight increase, and so there were increases in the three categories, credit, continuing ed, and flex enrollment, and as compared to the previous year. Remember, it is preliminary once again, and so increases occurred, once again, in all three categories. So that's good news, showing the trend with our headcount increasing. Now, how do we compare with our other colleges, the large colleges? Of course, we don't have spring 2024 data from the other colleges, so we're looking at spring of 2023, and you can see here that most of the comparable schools had a decrease. Two of them, Laredo and South Plains, had a slight increase, but not very much. So overall, we were very similar to our peers in the spring of 2023. And I'm sure we'll present the 2024 data once we're able to receive that. Now, we're going to talk about spring dual enrollment headcount, and this is where Dr. Rivera is going to go ahead and take over. Thank you, Dr. Rivera.
Thank you, Dr. Halcom. I appreciate that. So that's some good information to provide with you on this enrollment report. Dual enrollment, this is going to be on our credit dual enrollment programs, just so that's clearly stated. And these are the numbers students serve. And so we continue to trend positively with a one-year increase, 23 to spring 24, of 10%. A five-year increase of 3.7%, and a 10-year increase of over 114%. I think it's very admirable that we're able to continue that upward trend and continue to do so as we go forward, especially in light of House Bill 8 and FAST. Dual enrollment headcount increases are attributed to the number of school districts served. Currently, we're at about 48 school districts that we provide dual-credit programming in, and that number continues to also increase. We get calls, certainly periodically, on increasing schools that we service that are in our district or our service area, and even outside our service area. And so we got calls just not too long ago from a school, Science and Technology. They want us to service their schools in San Antonio and Houston. And those are just proposals at this point, but that's letting you know that we do receive calls from outside our service area. So there's a lot of interest in what Delmar is doing, and very innovative programs that we offer here at our college. And of course, you know, we offer a lot of different type of technical education programs, which school districts really, really go after. The kids are super interested in these CT-type programs that are offered at the high school campus. Typically welding process technology, instrumentation, and such are some of the more popular programs that are offered in our regional school districts at this time. But also, it's coupled with other programs that we want to also offer at these school districts as equipment and time permit. Go on to the next slide. And this is showing our credit contact hours, fall and spring. And so it's showing a year-over-year credit contact hour comparison, and as you can see, that we have a 2% increase right now, showing in our fiscal year, '22, '23. Increases in contact hours stem from innovative flex scheduling, as Dr. Halcom mentioned earlier. Those are schedules that are outside the 16 traditional week schedules or semester schedules, so eight-week, 15-week, and such. Also, our dual enrollment increases that I just mentioned earlier, and other strategic outreach and recruitment activities that we are performing at this time. Our next slide is depicting our total annual contact hours for continuing credit and continuing education for the academic year. And it shows a one-year 2.4% decrease at this point. What is not depicted is our most current year's numbers for the '23, '24. Those numbers are still being gathered and have yet to be certified yet, so we will have that information for you at the next enrollment report that we provide at the discretion of the board. But this is just giving you a snapshot of what we've, where we've been at, and I would hope to report a positive increase as we go forward. But again, this is depicting the '22, the '22, '23, not the '23, '24. So everyone's clear on that. Our next slide provides information on our annual enrollments in continuing education for the academic year, and we're showing that there has been a year-over-year increase of 10%. The increase in CE enrollments is a result of an increase of school districts served. As I mentioned earlier, dual enrollment, we're serving about 48 school districts at this point in time. And also, the fact that we've also had, had very much fortune in being awarded several grants, the Courting Board grant through the TRU grant, the Texas Rescale Upskill Through Education grant, has been, we've received a number of those grants, and also the Texas Workforce Commission grants for construction, and this recently, we even received one for the EKG to EMR grant. So those grants help us provide programming to community folks at large, and it typically pays for their tuition, equipment, supplies for those courses. So when we get these grants, it goes right back, the investment goes right back into the community, and that translates to more enrollments in our continuing education courses, especially for those targeted occupations. Top programs for the '22, '23, these are awards that are conferred for our credit programs. You'll see that, and this is something that's a recap from our early presentation that Ms. Keys and I made, but you'll see, no surprise, nurse education, liberal arts, business administration, welding, and process technology. Those are our top five programs that are awarded by our credit side of the house. On this continuing education side of the house, welding, basic medical coding, HVAC, and instrumentation are the top programs in those, in the CE area of our college. And again, these are great programs in our CE program areas. We work in concert with our faculty. We work out the curriculum. Many times, we have credit students and CE students in the same classroom, but at the end of the day, these students are getting these workforce skills awards, and they translate, are stackable towards credit programs for our Level 1, Level 2, and Associate Degree programs. And by the way, I'll make a footnote here. This is, the WSA, the stackable, is what we got recognized for recently at the Bellwether Consortium that Dr. Eskamia and many of our colleagues were recognized at in San Antonio just recently. Next slide is depicting continuing education, largest programs by enrollment. No surprise here, we have healthcare programs, which has been, in the years past, still remains the largest program of our offering here under CE Department, followed by our career and community education programs, and finally, our contract training programs that are offered here at the college. Our next slide is our credit education, largest programs by enrollment. We have liberal arts, which again was noted by Ms. Keys earlier in our House Bill 8 conversations, and then we also have registered nursing, and we have welding. So those are our three largest programs offered under our credit education programs here at the college. And finally, I'll sum up our discussion that Dr. Halcom and I have provided for you at this point. House Bill 8 rules remain a work in progress, as Ms. Keys and I mentioned earlier in our, in the workshop submitted today. Student enrollment is trending upward, 2.8% increase as of spring '24. Dual credit headcount is trending upward, a one-year 10% increase. Five-year, 3.7% increase, and a 10-year, 114% increase. I think that's phenomenal. And then we have credit contact hour increases of 2%. And then finally, we have our continuing education annual enrollment increases of 10%. And so, all in all, I feel that we're performing very, very well and tracking in a positive manner. And I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that our Board of Regents or anyone else may have for me, or Dr. Halcom.
I have a question. So in the past, we have looked at our continuing education by quarters.
Yes.
Is that data point changing for us now with House Bill 8, so that it's going to a semester? Or how are we comparing the apples to oranges?
That's a good question, yeah.
Conversation between continuing education and credit.
Yeah. I mean, honestly, I wish they, it would, it would change over to a more consistent basis of measurement, but at this point, there's no conversation as of yet that changes that metric. So continuing education for now will stay on our quarter system, and the credit programs will stay on our semester system. But I would think going forward in time, as Dr. Eskamia mentioned, I think these are things that are being refined and being looked at again. Don't be surprised if there isn't a common ground that they finally decide on going forward.
And the last comment, you've taught us well the difference between enrollment and headcount and contact hours. So as you're presenting this information, it'd be really helpful if we've kind of had those consistently colored, consistent, you know, all those together, so that when we're looking, when we're talking about enrollment, we're talking about enrollment, we're talking about headcount, let's do all of that, and then contact hours, so that we can really understand the comparison between all of those.
Sure.
Because when you jump back and forth between the different metrics, it gets a little, my brain has trouble keeping.
No, no, no. We can certainly make those adjustments on the next enrollment report, Ms. Scott. Not a problem.
Thank you. Dr. Turner has some questions.
Yes.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, I've asked this in the past.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a way that we can have a breakdown by school district? I'd like to see a headcount per school district, just to give us a baseline, especially with the new House Bill 8, and see how, and what school districts are going to be utilizing that, and what programs are they entering, so we kind of have an idea of where to put our resources in.
Absolutely. That data is available. We can break down dual enrollment by school district. That is something that we do track, and so that can be... That is something that we do track, and so, that can be added.
You don't have to wait for a formal meeting. I can get that information passed out to you all.
That'd be fine.
And then, if so desired, we can bring it to an open meeting.
Yeah, I just like to see the data.
Absolutely, that's perfectly.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Turner.
And can you make sure you actually, like, tell us how many total students that, you know, high school students they have? Because not just how many we've got in the program, but so we can get a percentage sense of it as well.
Of the school district, of the schools, so they have like 10,000 students. You want to know what percentage we're serving out of the 10,000 probable dual.
If Skidmore has 10, but they only have a class of 20, that's different than another high school having 400 but having 2,000 students.
Sure, sure. No, that's well, point we'll take in. We could do that.
We're taking notes.
Yeah.
I have, I have two comments if I may.
Absolutely.
So, what's important with this, regents, two points that are additionally important for discernment with this is we're going to continue to measure contact hours all despite or, yeah, despite the outcomes requirements of HB8. It's a, it's a, it's a measure of production. It's a measure of, it'll still be very useful, although not, not, not the basis for which we'll be receiving state funds. So, so, so I just want to make that point. The other thing too that comes up, there's a tandem here. Doctors Jonda and Leonard worked together to administer our dual enrollment program. We're now pushing just at 3,000, almost there, right?
Yes.
And like Leonard says, he wants, he wants to see 6,000, and I always appreciate his spirit. And, but the point, the point that I wanted to make is that the administration is kind of a cross-functional situation. Leonard and team make sure that, that things are out there, that they're, that they're out on the, at those 48 school districts, looking at the 49th, or sometimes it melts down to 46. And so, managing those relationships and those kinds of things. But the instruction, the instruction lies with Dr. Jonda, our chief academic officer and the faculty, okay? They, and they know how to do this so well. And that's, that's a, an awesome thing that isn't always easily achieved at colleges. And it comes up, it comes up frankly in conversations, and it came up the other day in a faculty council officers meeting, which I maintain on a monthly basis and have for a very long time. You know, who's really, who's really overseeing this? Remember, by standards for accreditation and so forth, it requires that the chief academic officer and the faculty oversee and are responsible for the instruction. So, I'd just like to make that point of clarification for you all and also take the opportunity to congratulate the partnership between these two particular offices and make a very, very powerful statement with our dual enrollment program. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Verver, appreciate the report. And Dr. Halcom, thank you. Moving on, we've got a policy review update, Ms. McDonald.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'll provide you with the status update of our policy review for fiscal year 24. So, we brought forward this review schedule this past year. So, I'm going to give you a status update. So, of course, our first priority was what a part of our policy, which are our B sections or the A sections or administrative procedures, were affected by the most recent state legislation. So, we had HB1, which was the DEI practices and programs. That policy and procedure work was completed this past December. We also had SB17, which was the DEI offices and initiatives. That policy and procedure work was completed also in December of '23. We have SB18, which is our faculty tenure. That is in progress, and the drafts for those policy changes and procedure revisions have been submitted to the related councils. So, it's in progress. That will be coming back to you. Our hope is to have that to you in June. And then, we have SB1376, which is our military employment preference. That policy work was completed in December of '23. SB1893, social media and government devices, that's in progress, and the draft is now under review. And then, SB412, which is the protection for pregnant and parenting students. That policy and procedure work was completed in December of '23. Of course, with anything, I think you have seen in the past that whereas you have to make a revision to one policy section or administrative procedure section, there's a ripple effect. So, it could cross multiple policies or multiple chapters of policies. So, as we continue, our priorities for this year, besides the work from the legislative sessions, was Chapter 5 and 6, proposed revisions that were not related to state and federal mandates. At this time, we have not identified that, that anything needs to be brought forward to the board as far as policy work. We also are looking at Chapters 7 and 8. Chapter 7 is students and 8 is miscellaneous. We do anticipate some revisions to Chapter 8, and we will actually rename that appropriately instead of miscellaneous. As a result of the Weaver Advisory Project for Safety and Security, that's going to probably become our policy section, policy and procedure section to do more with safety, emergency management, those type of things. So, we do anticipate we will have some work to bring back through the college and to the board. And any proposed revisions that were not related to state and federal mandates. So, that will come later this summer. Our timeline, April through August, we will continue to review the state and federal legislative changes to identify affected DMC policy and develop revisions as needed to bring back to the board. And then, June through August, anticipate the revised tenure policy will be brought to the Board of Regents once shared governance process is complete. And then, we anticipate, like I said, Chapter 8 policy revisions and additions will be brought to the board later in the summer. Possibly, it might go into the first of the next year, but we're hoping later this summer. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much, Ms. McDonald. And now, we'll hear from Mr. Streibos, an update on our Oso Creek Campus, City Corpus Christi Police, South Police Substation.
As part of our interlocal agreement with the City of Corpus Christi, we have review approval on the City of Corpus Christi Police Substation, and we have a presentation from Turner Mayor's Architects on their status on the police substation.
Thank you, John. Regents, Dr. Eskamia, thank you again for having us here today. We have another exciting presentation that is another testament to this college's continued collaboration with our City of Corpus Christi and our region as a whole. We have the opportunity to kind of come and bring you another project that is another added asset that will be located on the Oso Creek Campus with regards to, again, as you aforementioned, collaboration with the city. I, we've sought to do some things in order to make sure that it ties into the overall campus look, but still has a distinguished presence about it. We feel like this is going to be a great addition to this part of the community and adding to response time. Today, I have here with me Mr. Jay Porterfield, who's the project architect on the project, and I'm going to let him take y'all through some of the details of the project as well. And we'll be standing by for any questions after the presentation. So, thank you all again for having us here. Jay?
Good afternoon, regents and Dr. Eskamia. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. All right, so, we were tasked with designing approximately 7,300 square foot police substation for the City of Corpus Christi to be located at the southwest corner of the Oso Creek Campus. We are occupying just a little bit over two acres on that site. Part of that includes a new driveway coming off of Yorktown Boulevard, which will also serve the campus in later developments, other phases of the development of that camp, excuse me, of that campus. Here's an enlarged site plan that shows a little better the parking arrangements and the relationship of the building to Yorktown Boulevard. We have 25 public parking spaces and then about 60 spaces that are in a secure fenced area behind the building. As you are well aware, this is the Police Training Academy located just adjacent to our site for the substation. Here's another view of that. And this is showing a long sweeping canopy, a triple, triple column arrangement holding up the corner of that canopy. The use of modular face brick veneer that is very similar to the brick used on the rest of the Oso Campus. Now, we get to our new building, the substation. This is a view as you would see it driving down Yorktown Boulevard. The long side of the building faces Yorktown. As you come into the parking lot and drive up to the building, this is the view that you would see. It's very similar to the Training Academy and the reference of, at a smaller scale, referencing a sweeping canopy at the main entrance and going along the front facade of the building that faces Yorktown and a triple column. Here's another view, more in the evening or nighttime scenario. The three columns that we, that we show there and on the Training Academy represent valor, courage and tradition. This is a view that faces towards the east, also towards the Police Training Academy. The trio that I mentioned a second ago is also represented by the three volumes of the building. The two outside volumes on the left and the right will be a face brick veneer that will be the same as what is used on the Training Academy and the Oso Creek Campus. The middle veneer will be, the middle volume will be represented by a fiber cement panel with a coordinated color but a varied texture to give that center portion a little more independence from the other two. Here's the same view in an evening scenario. We have this center light well in the middle of the building that will either be lit from the outside or possibly a backlit window type of situation. On the back of the building, this is the side that faces towards the secure parking area. We elected to go with a more simple facade with five fenestrations, including one door. And those five fenestrations represent the five core values of the Police Department, which are honesty, integrity, community service, fairness, work ethic and leadership. Here's another view as you go around the side of the building, another entrance into the work areas on the secure parking side as well as a garage door, excuse me, to a part of the building that will house bicycles and all train vehicles that the Police Department will be using. Another view as you come around, and this is also the side that faces Yorktown Boulevard again. And I have a couple of videos to show you. And this is a fly-through of the exterior of the building that will show the building in different lights and different times of day from different angles.
A couple of things while y'all are watching this video that the city really seeks to achieve with, with this particular building is they really want it to be fairly transparent and open to the, to the public. So, you'll notice that we have lots of glass. There's a community, the briefing room can also be used as a community room. They really want the ability to have the building have a presence that draws a community and doesn't feel like, hey, this is a police station, I shouldn't only go in there if there's, you know, trouble or something like that, but that this is their police station, that they can come in, interact with the police. I think it really falls in line with their community policing type. I know that Chief Markle and the Police Department really strive and work hard towards making sure that they're integrated and a good partner with the community and that it's not just, hey, you know, this is the police and you've got to, you know, I think that's, so we really try to strive to incorporate that as well as to make it an open, transparent building that is inviting and is not something that, it just kind of standoffish in a way. Yes, Dr. Eskamia?
Hey, Philip, calling Mark.
Yes.
So, Philip, I understood that this is going to be the largest substation for the CCPD. Is that in terms of square footage or is that number of officers assigned or both or?
Jay's telling me over here, both. So, you know, it will be larger. Obviously, there are other substations within the community. This is a product of really working with city staff, and I'd be remiss and mention we've got a couple of city staff members here from engineering and purchasing.
Thank you for being here.
And that are, that are here working with a project we have. Been working with them and the Police Department and Chief Markle to make sure that we, they've got some lessons learned operationally, functionally. They wanted this facility to have a big enough of a footprint that it could accommodate growth in the department, obviously, as the city in this area continues to grow. Have a couple of features in it that are unique to this, these new substations where we have the ability to park some ATVs and some community type, you know, bikes for bike police and things of that nature where they can not only, you know, there's obviously a large investment going on with Bill, with Park across the street that's significant. You continue to have activities there, and obviously soccer game for you. Go out there and spend as much time at Bill Wit Park as I do with soccer. You see, there's quite a lot of activity, not including the activity that the campus has brought to the area. So, it is a fairly larger footprint and also in terms of police presence with regards to the numbers of officers, but just the footprint as well.
Thank you.
Mark, yes?
Thank you.
So, I think with, we got one more. Here's just an interior walkthrough. We didn't give you a floor plan per se within the presentation, but this is just out of our Revit model, which is our kind of a functional construction document model. So, it's not as polished as the, as the other renderings you see, but just gives you a sense. You walk in, there's a lobby, you know, they've got some ability to showcase some, some community aspects, awards and things of that nature. And then, I'll let Jay walk you through the rest. I don't know, Jay?
Sure. Yeah, so this is the work area where the officers would come in to work on paperwork, file reports and that sort of thing. There's, you know, cabinets and storage, and it's a very functional kind of space. Next to this, we have a break room where they come in to get ready for their shifts or when they're coming off of their shifts, they have a chance to sit down, have a quick snack or a meal and rest before they go home. We also, of course, don't show the video, but we do have locker rooms and showers for the officers that serve them. This right here will be the briefing room. It's designed to seat approximately 50 people. I would imagine it could also be used as a community room for community meetings, but it's intended primarily for large meetings and briefings with the Police Department and officers. And then, they also have a small conference room for smaller meetings between themselves. There's also a captain's office, sergeant's office, lieutenant. They all have their own private offices in addition to the workspaces that are general for the officers to do their paperwork in. Although, it's a pretty simple floor plan, it's very functional, and as was mentioned earlier, is expanded from a previous substation that was built recently because these, the substation will serve a much larger area.
This breed, and this is a, this building is a 24/7, 365, like any other police station. So, it's going to bring a much-needed presence on that very densely side of town, densely populated side of town. Thank you for this.
Yeah.
I have a question. You show a perimeter on the secure parking area. Is that actually fencing? And if so, what kind on the floor, on the site plan you showed?
It would be a decorative fence, Madam Chair, it would be a decorative fence, an aluminum decorative fence. It wouldn't be, you know, opaque or, you know, wooden slatted fence. It would be something that would be decorative in nature. Unfortunately, because there's service weapons and things that are in computers and things, it's a requirement from a police perspective and standpoint with their rules and regulations that that, their patrol cars be placed behind a secure perimeter, obviously, as well. And so, we, that is going to be, we envision it to be a decorative, you know, aluminum, you know, type fence. No barbed wire, nothing like that.
But it does have to have some, some structure to it because, okay. I just, you didn't show it in the renderings and in the fly-through. So, I was just curious if we had looked at the fence and you're okay with it, John? So, that'd be my only question.
As they further, this is a preliminary set of the details. So, as we get more details, then we'll review those, yes?
Regent Kroll.
It looked like on the first slide that we had leased y'all five acres. It looks like you're only using about three. Are we going to get two acres back?
Unfortunately, Regent Kroll, I can't answer that question. That would be a question for the city. Obviously, if there would, should be need to expand or expand parking is, you know, obviously, the amount of officers, you know, I can't, I can't speak to the arrangements that were, were made with regards to the leasing of that space. Unfortunately, that would be a question for the city.
Sixty parking spaces is almost more than you have downtown now.
Right, oh, that's, that's true. That's true. You know, I think, obviously, it would be up to discussions with you and the city as to, if that needed to be modified or amended, you know, obviously, if it, the station's in operation and that y'all need it for something else, I'm sure. I know you guys have worked as good partners with the city thus far.
And that's, that's a really good segue to, and we'll come back, Regent Kroll, with any of those details. Augie and I will. But, you know, the partnership with CCPD, CCFD, the city in general is really the, But, you know, the partnership with CCPD, CCFD, the city in general is really the lesson here. When this, when this piece of land was purchased in 2013, October 2013, you know, we set forth with a strategic plan with covenants that said there will be public-public partnerships, public maybe even, and hopefully even public-private partnerships and the like. These are the beginnings of that. And then when you have the added sense of security and not only cooperation, it really makes for a tremendous partnership. And I just want to say it's been really great to continue to work with the city of Corpus Christi, Chief Markwood and Peter Zanoni and team. I see the officers all over town. Everybody's talking about it. Everybody's excited about it.
And I think it will reduce response times as well.
Sure.
You know, I think that, you know, if you live in that part of the city and, you know, you, the response times as well, I mean, obviously, they're actively patrolling the streets, but just having this facility kind of central to that area of town, I think, would be, would be great.
We appreciate the update. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
All right, our pending business list. We are talking about changing this a little bit, Regents, so that we can not just talk about pending items, but also upcoming items on our agenda so that if you're, if you're wanting to know when things are coming before the board, so that you might see some alterations of this in the next few months to, from pending business to upcoming agenda items slash pending business. We'll figure out a fancy name for that, but that's, we are going to be altering this a little bit. In May, we'll look at our tax collections and we'll also hear about our strategic enrollment management. And that is different from the marketing plan, but it obviously is a corollary to that. Then we'll also have our discussion on tuition fee schedule for our continuing education programs. You'll note for your planning purposes that we don't have a regular board meeting in July, but do check your calendar because Delia sent out the budget workshops and the budget adoption dates and those kinds of things. So we will potentially have a budget workshop meeting in July that would include any special action items that we might need at that time. Any questions on our pending list? If not, we'll move forward with our consent agenda. We do have information provided in the packet on approval of minutes, acceptance of our quarterly investment report, and acceptance of our investment reports. A note there as well, we have determined that we are no longer going to receive in-person quarterly reports from Meter, our investments strat, our investment consultant. We'll be receiving those in person on an annual basis, but on a quarterly basis, we'll be receiving those in writing. And if there's ever any questions, please let Dr. Eskimia and/or Mr. Garcia know and they can answer those questions for you. With that, is there any item that needs to be pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Sole move.
There's a motion by Mr. Kroll, a second by Dr. Adami. He hollered first. Any comment or question on those? Any public comment on our consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to our regular agenda item and our first agenda item for reg, agenda item number four is discussion and possible action regarding the tax increment reinvestment zone number six. And Ms. Keys is going to start that presentation for us.
Yes, thank you very much, Regents. Today, we are bringing back to you TERS number six, which is for Barisi Village. As you note, it's a tax reimbursement plan and this is requested by the developer. This comes from action that took place with the city of Corpus Christi in January where they approved under first reading for this to move forward pending the approval of either Delmar College or the county. The county subsequently approved their first reading or, they only have to have one, their reading in February. And the city and the county are presently engaged in the interlocal agreement finalization of that agreement. And today, we do have representatives from Barisi Village here with us who are going to present this proposal. And Mr. Jeff Blackard is here as the developer and I'm going to introduce Mr. Blackard. Thank you very much. Here comes Mr. Blackard and Jed, so thank you.
Sorry I wasn't here the last time. My name is Jeff Blackard from 401 Adriatic Parkway in McKinney, Texas. And I thought we'd go through the slides again with a little bit more detail to really explain what we're trying to accomplish on Barisi Village. And Jed's going to go through the slides real quick since he prepared them. Why don't you run through them?
Do you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, yes. Jed Rollins with Blackard, also at 401 Adriatic Parkway in McKinney, Texas. There won't be a whole lot of new information at the beginning. I know everybody's seen the project a number of times, but it's 127 acres. It's the former Farrow Valley Golf Course. We're projecting between 800 and a billion, $800 million and $1 billion in taxable value once it's complete. We're building a high-density European-style village. The TERS itself is only the one parcel, only the parcel being developed. It doesn't include any of the surrounding homes or neighborhoods. This is the full built-out site plan. There's some densities presented there that are also in the TERS packet. One part that we like to note is that, you know, this parcel is under some pretty severe legal restrictions. It's under both some severe PUD zoning restrictions and deed restrictions that were imposed by the neighboring properties. Essentially, we're required to build a large amount of public parking spaces, public parking garages, public spaces for plazas and open spaces. We're also required to maintain a large portion of the property as open space and as buffer space for the surrounding properties. It requires a supermajority of the surrounding homeowners to change those restrictions. Obviously, those restrictions impose a pretty high cost on the developer to comply with them.
What is the term harsh public infrastructure schedule mean?
The PUD actually dictates when we have to develop certain portions of the public infrastructure. So we actually have to build all of the public infrastructure in one phase. Typically, with a project like this, you would phase out your public infrastructure and we don't have that luxury under the zoning.
What is the timeline on that?
The PUD just dictates one phase of public infrastructure.
It doesn't dictate a start and end date?
This is, this slide shows a little bit about our company and our partner, Bridgeview Real Estate out of Dallas. Both companies, both companies are both established with a long track record. Bridgeview is a fully-integrated developer and private equity company that's completed a number of successful projects in the region, Texas, I mean. And Blackard has developed over $7 billion of assets over our history. TERS number six, this just goes through the method of governance and specifics of the TERS itself. It's overseen, obviously, by a TERS board, which Delmar will have representation on. Payments go to reimburse us, the developer, for costs that we've already incurred and borrowed against and have performed. It's a performance-based reimbursement. The 20-year TERS is, includes city and county participation, assuming that all things end up as they look to right now. We're proposing that Delmar participate at the 10 years that complies with your policy. And again, it's only, only one parcel in this TERS, so it doesn't encumber any of the surrounding properties. We include a note here that the participation that we're, that we're asking for is really imperative to the project. I know we, I think we circulated an analysis of that, but even with the full participation, there's a pretty significant funding gap that we're contending with at this point. So there's not, not any luxury in the ask that we're making. This is an overview of the public costs. All of the costs that were presented in the project plan were prepared by a third-party engineer, the public costs. The TERS will pay for public sewer, storm and water infrastructure portions of it. It'll pay for a portion of the public structured parking, landscape irrigation, traffic street improvements, increased wayfinding signage and lighting for public safety. It assists with the plaza and the tower requirements. It also improves the public parks and fountains. It builds public restrooms within the project. There's also additional public safety and security and the nature preserve as well and walking trails. This is, this is the slide that has changed from the last request. We're now requesting 10-year participation from Delmar, 10 years of the 20-year TERS at 90% for the entire 10 years of participation from Delmar. After 2033, Delmar would receive 100% of the increased property taxes as well as the original basis. 100% of the surrounding property taxes would go to Delmar the entire time. And again, these costs go only to reimburse the developer for costs they've already incurred for publicly beneficial uses alone. It creates 895 permanent jobs as well as some construction jobs that we'll speak on in just a moment. It creates $20.2 million in new revenue over the entire life of the TERS for Delmar itself. That's Delmar's number, not the other taxing entities. It also creates housing and retail and public amenities for students and staff, obviously, of Delmar. Obviously, the TERS, as I spoke on earlier, is critical for the project's success. Not achieving the contributions in the TERS would likely relate to some construction delays and reduced public amenities, make it difficult for us to contribute to the local housing stock. We're contributing a lot of additional housing units and trying to raise the local development standard, obviously. After the TERS is approved and development agreement is approved, the developer would borrow and publicly or privately finance the public amenities. We would request a reimbursement from the TERS and obviously, those costs would be audited to make sure that we get reimbursed only the portion of the costs that we're entitled to, and then the TERS fund would reimburse those costs.
Jed, I have a question on that previous slide. So in the developer agreement, are things like the timetable for construction, the public amenities you were referring to earlier, is that laid out in the developer agreement or is that still at your discretion?
No, it would typically be in the developer agreement. Those developer agreements would typically have a required start and end date, usually tied to pulling the permit and achieving.
And what would be in each phase of the project? So you talked about phasing of those public infrastructures. That would be phase one and that would be part of the developer agreement?
Yes, that's correct. And then there would typically be a reimbursement basis that would basically spell out the maximum reimbursement for each phase. And then once we went out and incurred the costs, we would be able to essentially draw against that reimbursement base.
And the board, the TERS board approves that developer agreement?
Yes, the TERS board and ultimately, I believe, city council has to also approve it, but.
Gotcha, okay.
I have a question. You know, you said that even with this money, you may or may not be able to put a deal together and I understand that. We had another one of these that we were participating in with the city where basically the developer kind of vanished and so it's just sitting there. What's a reasonable amount of time if we wanted to say if construction hasn't started within X timeframe, we're out of this thing, so we're not, you know, just putting money into a bank account that we can't spend?
Well, we haven't vanished in 10 years. I don't know what a reasonable time is.
Okay.
I mean, we're spending, we spent the last three months a million dollars on architecture, probably another half a million dollars in civil engineering. So we're spending money right this second today as we sit here. If the market conditions dictate that we can start, we will start. And obviously, you're an expert in real estate, you know how tough the market is.
Yep.
Otherwise, we wouldn't be here today talking to you. We need every advantage we can get to put together the zoning document that you actually approved nine years ago.
Yeah, just so everyone knows, I was on council when they did the zoning, so.
He's intimately.
That's how long it's been.
He's intimately knows the restrictions are in the document that we have to build public plazas, et cetera. So, Carl, back to you. I mean, we will start, I wish we could start tomorrow. We're probably, my guess, six months out after all architecture is finished and approved by the city. That would be our best case sometime this winter. I would love to start construction and so would all the homeowners in my neighborhoods.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Had a couple of questions that thought were relevant to that slide. I'll let you continue, Jed.
Absolutely. The economic impact, I spoke about construction jobs earlier. We're estimating, actually, Dr. Lee helped us prepare the estimate for about 2,600 construction jobs through the life of the construction of all the phases. Obviously, we also anticipate creating about 900 permanent jobs, mostly in the service and operations and management and maintenance fields. Obviously, we named a couple of programs that relate closely to Delmar and jobs that will be created in those fields. We also spoke about creating a, basically, a preferred internship program, which is something that we're very interested in doing with Delmar students and alumni. Also, just for the community at large, creates gathering spaces for all ages. This is a community where, you know, we have essentially the whole spectrum of living situations from an apartment that somebody might move into early in their life to somewhere you might move after you've retired and are, you know, have the ability to age in places, as the industry typically calls it. High-quality restaurants and retail. We have about 200,000 square feet of retail and restaurants that we can build under the zoning. Offices and conference rooms, hike and bike trails, which will connect to trails throughout the city, and also birdwatching and nature preserve, which is obviously our passion for the back of the property. As far as the contributions, this is based on the current tax rates and collection rates. The values are presented in the third column from the left there, obviously, starting from tax year 2025 with the construction value, which I believe was corrected from last time, it was a little high. We're projecting about $6.4 million from Delmar under our current projections. We're asking for a cap of $7 million in contributions, which is on the previous slide. That's at the 90% contribution rate. Here's a little bit more about our partners, Bridgeview. Obviously, they're very active in multifamily office, industrial, retail. They've closed about $5 billion in transactions. They're very active in the capital markets, private equity. And then a little bit more about us. I think our history is probably a little more well-known, but obviously, our focus is on village-type development of this kind. You see a couple images of Adriatica on this slide, but also some of our history in resort and single-family and office projects as well. I believe this is our last slide. Yes, so again, we create jobs and we think we'll be, you know, overall highly positive for the college in a multitude of ways.
All right. Closing comments?
Pardon me?
Do you have any closing comments before we turn it back over to Lenora?
No, I was just here to answer any questions.
Any additional questions from board members?
May I ask one? Thank you for coming back today. I appreciate it and for adjusting the request to fit our policy. I greatly appreciate that. I think I remember correctly that it was reported publicly that I think I remember correctly that it was reported publicly that you were involved in the North Beach TERS. Is that correct?
Yes.
Can you just give us an update on that, or what happened with that? Because we haven't heard much about that lately.
It's a good question. We actually wrote the North Beach TERS. It was for all of North Beach, which was about 400 acres, which desperately needed that. And I'm sure I don't want to bring up a sore subject, but I was very involved in trying to put a canal on North Beach, because I thought that was the solution to get North Beach economic growth, is to solve the drainage problem on North Beach and bring, you know, boats internal and stuff like that. And through that process, the TERS is in place and it's activated now, and I think David's on the board, and I think they've done a couple of projects on North Beach, which has helped. And it'll continue to help in the future as growth happens on North Beach. So I'm very familiar with that TERS. The difference, I'll kind of explain the difference, which is probably the most important thing while while I asked to come back. North Beach is a conglomeration of, I don't know, 1,000 different parcels. 1,000 people own properties on North Beach, which is inside the TERS. In this particular TERS, there's only one property owner inside this TERS. That piece of property has restrictions on it, both zoning and also deed restrictions that overlap that. So if a bulldozer goes out there tomorrow and we start construction, property values around the TERS, not inside the TERS, will go up, most likely. I mean, I would bet on it, it would go up pretty quickly. You get 100% of those dollars if we put a bulldozer out there. If you if we don't put a bulldozer out there, property values won't go up as much, okay, adjacent to this site. So the the question, like, I I've talked to several people, if if the if no development happens, you're always, your your position is, well, if nobody goes, if if we don't approve the TERS, then nothing will hap happen out there. Or if we don't, and they still go develop it, because maybe they can go back to the city and get a different zoning, right? Just a subdivision. We'll get those taxes. And that would be your your argument. But because these restrictions sit on top of the zoning, it's virtually impossible, I think. I'm not going to do it, okay? Go back to 75% of the adjacent property owners and get them to sign it again for a subdivision. Now, all the adjacent property owners, and there's a lot here, they're saying, I want a village here, and that's all we're going to accept. So then the land will just stay vacant. And what will happen to it eventually? I don't know, you know? I mean, we can speculate, but I know that I won't be doing it. I won't be that person. That's why I think when I talked to Carol and and others, I said, this restriction sits there that a lot of people don't really understand. So that's kind of the unique situation of this property that's different than any other TERS in the state of Texas.
Thank you for clarifying that, and and I think my question about North Beach has more to do with track record. And so I guess what I'm asking is, when you when you approached the taxing entities for the North Beach TERS, were you able to complete the things you told them you would do, just as you're telling us that, you know, we're going to get these new jobs and new revenue? What was the performance in terms of what was projected at the beginning of the North Beach TERS to where we are today?
It's a good question. What we stated, what we would do is build a hotel on North Beach, in which we, that was a first development agreement within the TERS, as soon as the canal was built, okay? And the canal wasn't built. So of the things on the TERS we stated that we would do, we were doing like three of those, in which we escrowed the money in the bank to go build those things. As soon as the canal was, a navigable canal was going to be built, we would have started construction. The money was in the bank. In fact, during that time, we even offered to build the canal. If you go back and, for those who were in those meetings, or go find the funding for the canal back then. But it didn't happen, that's just in my past, but but what we did do on North Beach is we put $35 million into the tax base by building the lighthouse and the multifamily and the meeting space in there. So we did do it, we said, in fact, we went over, because we were going to build a lighthouse out of a split-face CMU block, okay? And the city participated in that a little bit. But what we did come back to do on North Beach is build one of the finest pieces of architecture. I mean, what is the tallest stone lighthouse in the Western Hemisphere, with seven, six-foot wide walls, all out of stone. It's a masterpiece. So our track record on North Beach for architecture and design, and we're at 94% leased up, and one of the highest rates in all of Corpus Christi right now. I think we have proven, Mr. Fraser and myself, that we, you know, we we said we were going to do that, and we did it. And if that canal was in place today, you would see it, which was half-designed a hotel to go on that canal. So I think we did everything we said, and I wish that canal was there and we had a hotel there.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Blackard? Thank you very much. Again, we appreciate you being here today and for the revised request. Thank you, thank you, Jen. Ladies and gentlemen. All right, Lenora, you have a couple more slides?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Based upon the the presentation that was just made, we believe that the college would participate in the TERS number six for 10 years at 90%, with a maximum contribution of up to $10, $7 million would be most beneficial to the college. And the process to date and next steps would be to authorize administration to execute the final documentation, further discussion and appointment of a TERS board member if you approve this. The TERS board would approve a project and financing plan, and the TERS board will also approve the development developer agreement. It is also my understanding that if you so desired as a board of regents, you could also approve the developer agreement before the city council approved it. That would be one step that you could add if you so choose. And so before you today is for consideration, is to authorize Delmar College administration, at Delmar College, to participate in TERS number six in accordance with the outlined terms as presented for 10 years at 90%, with a maximum contribution up to $7 million, and further authorize administration to prepare and execute all necessary documentation.
All right. Are there any questions for Ms. Keys? All right. Yes, I'm so sorry, Mr. Kroll.
Is it, what's the impact if that 90% was stair-stepped, say, to 90% for the first three years and 75% for the next four years and 50% for the last three years?
Yes, sir. We've done that similar in the past with other TERS or other tax abatements, where we have a declining amount that varies throughout the life of the either tax abatement or TERS. We do not have those calculations with us today, in that this is what was presented for consideration. However, we can make those calculations if you so choose.
So I guess the question would be, is it is it the total amount, regardless of the number of years, or is it the years at a, is it any amount? And so if they're asking for a maximum of seven, then that's how you get to seven?
At 90%. That's how you get to close to seven. And this assumes that the tax rate is the same as it is today, of course, then the projections, and assuming the tax rate will change going forward.
So the proposal is maximum 10 years, maximum 7 million?
At 90%.
At 90%.
There's three, three elements, really.
What happens, you know, like this table says that the value's going to be $80 million in 2027. What happens if it's only 50 million?
Then that's what the tax rate is based on.
Okay. And that's what?
And we.
The revenues and reimbursements are based on?
Yes, sir. The reimbursement is only on the incremental portion over and above.
Right.
The taxes that are collected, normally.
Any other questions for Ms. Keys? Now, we'll have an opportunity now for a public comment before the board has further deliberation. We have six individuals who have signed up to speak, so I'm going to call, you'll each have three minutes. I'm going to call on Mr. Steve Gomez, and after that will be Nathan Bigby. Mr. Steve Gomez?
Steve Gomez, 6630 Clarion Drive. I wanted to address a a specific question related to what your tax basis you're describing. Currently today, you're getting somewhere in the neighborhood of around $3,788 based on the current tax basis, because it's an open field. And that's the only percentage that you're getting off of this from New Acis County's collections. If you do nothing, that's all you get. Immediately upon the development going into place, that will jump up to around $12,000 for you almost immediately. But that was when I saw it on the 20 years, now it's reduced to 10. So it's going to be increasingly quite a bit more than that. Our neighborhood pulled together to support this thing. It's taken us about 12 years to get this place in collaboration. With your help, we can get the next step. It took us about two years to get this thing done, starting with the legislature, because we had to go to Austin and change the tax rules, because of what was happening with all the golf courses shutting down around the country. We got the city approval, we got the neighborhood approval, which was quite a task at 75%, because that's what it requires. And at 75%, we had to get collective associations together, three different condo units, Carriage Park, Seaside Villa, and Rock Creek, about 121 homes, two apartment complexes and the owner of the property. We knew we had to get 75% in each of those categories because of the people pushing back, and there were going to be lawsuits. Well, that happened anyway. In 10 years, through federal, then state, two different cases, and now here. And we're still working through bureaucracy to make this thing happen. It's in your hands, push us to the next step. There's 49 acres on the on the development side because of the deed restrictions. If you wanted to try to do this again, imagine trying to get 75% of anybody to vote, and to get people like myself and these other members who are going to speak here. I was past president, and working through the other associations, we rallied and got all of those groups to vote. I couldn't imagine trying to pull that off again today. It's not that this isn't the only option, this is the best option we've had. And we've got the best developer that's been working with us every single day to pull through what changes have to be made. The back half of it is still a golf course, a golf country club-like environment, and anytime those kinds of development pieces, what it would look like, come into play, he sits down and talks with us. And you even heard him saying a development piece of his example, the my properties around the neighborhood, he counts us as part of the community, as if we're family, not just the developer. Every aspect, he spends time with us to get this done. So here we are. You can take $4,000 about, or you can get into 7 million. It's not that complicated. The rules upon which you set up and the tourists to be able to stay involved, that's, we know we have to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez.
And we appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Please, help us get this done.
Mr. Nathan Bigby, and then Steve Moody.
Good afternoon. Nathan Bigby at 1001 Luxor Drive. I live in Pharaoh Valley. We're very excited for this project to move forward. I wanted to speak on the property taxes that will be, that we're anticipating are going to increase. Right now, you get about $860 from me every year on my property taxes. In the, there's about 200 homes that actually personally touch the land that we're talking about, and one of my neighbors is an urban city planner, is anticipating that rates are going to double to triple, or home values will double to triple over the coming years. If that happens on just the 200 touching properties, that's an additional $118,000 to you every single year. Now, within 78412, there are approximately 15,500 different housing units that are average-evaluated $118,000. If those increase by just 25%, that's over $1 million to you. So even though you might feel like you're taking a a cut on the TERS tax, as the property values increase, it is going to help Delmar out significantly, which is exciting. So on a financial level, this is a great investment for the college from my standpoint. Now, I love the Pearl in San Antonio, and if you guys have been there, to me, everyone I talk to, I go, they're putting a Pearl in Corpus Christi. And actually, the parking spaces, I just spoke with them, there's going to be more parking spaces in Borisi Village than there are at the Pearl. That place gets packed out every single weekend, and the community that gathers there, that goes, is incredible. I lead a church full-time and have worked with college students from Delmar, Northwest Vista, and San Antonio, UTSA, and TMUCC. And when they graduate, one of the number-one things they look for are jobs and community. And one of the things with Corpus Christi is that there isn't a lot of great community space. We're building that up in the city, I'm, I've been so excited to see that recently. But to me, putting something like the Pearl in the middle of Corpus Christi will actually help Delmar and TMUCC students want to stay here and continue to develop and build our community moving forward. It's an incredible opportunity. There will be splash splash pads for families, there will be great green spaces in Borisi. And I look at it, I go, why in the world would we not want to do this, to pull together as a community, community together, to get back to the sparkling city that we were once known for, and continue pushing that further and further? So on a financial level for yourselves, and for your students, and the community as a whole, please pass this TERS tax so that we can promptly move forward with getting this incredible facility built. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bigby. Next will be Steve Moody, followed by Hugo Berlanga.
Steve Moody, 6717 Pharaoh, and I went to Delmar in the 70s and the 80s and got my five-year degree. If you can imagine, I had long hair and was sailing and surfing back then, but I finally made it through, and even went on to have Lenora ask me to be an adjunct professor teaching banking here. So she she knew me. And I'm not going to tell you all the things you already know, but I am going to just, David, you asked something of them, and you said that you didn't want the cost of Delmar, you didn't want to leave your money sitting there for an undetermined amount of time. You're not putting your money there, there is no money. You don't get anything until Blackard performs, and it's got to be built, approved, and everybody, all the entities have to have to approve it. So that's when, that's when you pay. People have already said it, but there's no cost to you right now, you're going to get your dividends in the years ahead. And I just want to be clear, I'm not, I'm a banker, I've been at American Bank for 23 years, Prosperity Bank for 10 now, over 10. And I'm not affiliated with Jeff on this project, but I am a property owner there. And I just want to let you know, from the banking aspect, when he goes, or Steve May, I've talked to his partner, when they go to get their loans for the various projects or various phases of this development, it's it's going to be done in phases, it's real important to the banker that's sitting back there to know that they have full community support. And I don't want to minimize it, 7 million is a lot of money, but I think in order for them to 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 meet their maximum potential with this project, they need your support. So with that, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody.
And thank you for the years of education.
Thank you. Thank you for your years of service as a professor. Hugo. Hugo Berlanga, followed by Susie Luna Saldana.
Thank you very much, Madam President, District Regents. Let me just say that this has been in the making for a decade. It's incredible that here we are, 10 years later, when this project ought to have been built. But unfortunately, and to your credit, Mr. Blackard has had the staying power to stay with it, to stay with it. And I was involved with the legislation that changed the deed restrictions on that property. There was a lot of developers that came and looked at that property, and they walked away when they saw the deed restriction. Mr. Blackard had the vision, at least to come to the legislature and give it a try, and he was successful. And I was glad to be part of that, but unfortunately, after we passed the legislation, some property owners saw fit to sue the governor, to sue the Attorney General, to sue everybody in the legislative process, claiming that the legislation was unconstitutional. Let me just say, this piece of legislation affects other golf, potential golf courses that are gonna end up in the same situation as Faro Valley did. And so I would urge y'all to give favorable consideration to this legislation. And again, it's been a long time coming. I think this will be something that'll be big for the city of Corpus Christi, that'll expand our tax base. But remember, you have the checks and balances, you're gonna have some people serving on the tourist. Not one dime can be reimbursed until it's done, the work is completed. And so again, I mean, we have a great opportunity, and it's sad that sometimes it takes 10 years to come to this point, and y'all are the last entity that hopefully will give approval to this worthy project, and something that we can all be proud of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Berlanga. Susie Luna Saldana, followed by John Hardy.
Susie Luna Saldana, 4710 Hackel, President Scott, Board Regents. I come before you on this issue, simply because I want you to take a different point of view of what you've been hearing. This is about the quality of life, the quality of life for our community, for our people, our students, and what's going on. These are the things that I want you to think about. This is a long-term investment that you're going to be making. It's not gonna happen right away, but you're going to see the profits. But what's most important, we, the people, are going to see the profits. We are the ones that are gonna benefit from it, because we will have something that is worthwhile, and our quality of life will improve. I'm asking you to really consider passing this enthusiastically. I just don't want to see you pass, I want to pass altogether, because I want to see what's best for Corpus Christi and the people in Corpus Christi. And this is beneficial for our people, for our community. So I urge you to take a look at, they gave you all the facts and figures, and how much money you're gonna be making, and how much money they have to put in, but I'm more interested in how it will impact the quality of life for our people, how it will benefit our students, our community, and what we would have to see that would be wonderful. Wouldn't it be great if we had something really, really special like that? I know that looking around the community in that area, there certainly are in favor of it. The rest of us from different areas are also excited to see this project work. So I ask you, and I urge you with all my heart, to think about the people and pass this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luna Saldana. John Hardy.
Good afternoon. John Hardy, 6709 Faro Drive. I have an economics degree, I'm a pastor at City Church, but I studied music here at Del Mar, so I'm gonna sing the rest of my presentation to you.[853.13][853.13](Laughter). Not really, not really, you don't want that. But I love your music department. So, I'm speaking because I was... My wife and I moved into Faro Valley in 2010, right after the golf course closed. Within a couple of years, we were involved in the Faro Valley Neighborhood Association, and by the time this proposal came along with Borisi Village, the board asked me to be the petition circulator. So I became very familiar with what the petition was all about. We have approximately 200 touchpoints to the perimeter, but we had 356 possible voters, owners, that were going to be voting on the deed restriction changes. We needed 267 votes, we got 296, which is pretty amazing, because, you know, once, you know, there weren't golfers walking around all the time, and people kinda living on the perimeter thought, well, this is sort of like ranch life. I mean, here we are in the middle of the city, we've got all this countryside view, and they were kinda settling into that. But once we saw the Borisi Village concepts, and we met Jeff Blackard, and we got to know what kind of person he was, all those people began to change their minds and line up and say, this is amazing that a developer of this quality is going to come into Corpus Christi. Many years ago, a friend of mine introduced me to a certain population in Corpus Christi that you may be familiar with, called the Cave People. Do you know the Cave People? Citizens against virtually everything?[967.81][967.81](Laughter). Well, there is such a thing, and at one time, I kinda thought I was that kind of guy. But I thought, no, I want this kind of developer to come into Corpus Christi. Today, for public comment, you don't have anybody here speaking against it. We're only speaking for it, and we want it very much. We think it's gonna make a big difference in Corpus, and even if it does raise our property values, and even if we do have to pay taxes, more property taxes, and we all know we will, this is something that we think is good, and we're excited for your opportunity to align with the support of the city and the county, and so we say thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Anyone else for public comment?
Can I make one more comment?
Mr. Blackard, you'll be invited to make one more comment.
Carl, you were mentioning about, you know, the tours going down from 90% to 80%. We need every penny we can get, and so that would be my response. David, I spent a few minutes with him, who's your real estate expert, for sure. He ran the numbers on what it costs to build a project like this. Because of the parking structures, and all the public plazas and spaces like this, we can't compete in this market unless we get that kind of help. So, I just wanted to respond to that. That's very important to what we're doing. And I appreciate all these people that are like family to me. This has been 10 years, lots of votes, lots of people, and, you know, if we get through this hurdle, we still have a hurdle, I don't wanna mislead anybody. The next hurdle is getting financing in a market that's crazy, as David well knows, but we will do everything we can. I didn't come down here for 10 years, and I only came down for this project, not for Lighthouse Point or anything else. I was just coming down here, okay? And so I did a few little, other little things, but this is the project that I wanna do.
Thank you, Mr. Blackard. We appreciate those follow-up comments. All right, board members, do we have other questions, comments from board members? Ms. Avery?
Again, just thank you to everybody, certainly Mr. Blackard, and everybody who spoke today. I just wanna clarify for myself, I mean, I certainly don't think that there is anybody up here who is opposed to development, or who is opposed to tours in general, and my vote in opposition last month simply had to do with the fact that the request did not meet our policy, which was limited to 10 years, when it comes to these kinds of requests. So I very much appreciate you revising the request and coming back, and for people who spoke on behalf of it today. Had this been done last month, I dare say the vote may have gone a different way, but I appreciate the revisions that were made, and the tenacity and perseverance to continue to try to make this happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Regent Beverly?
Madam Chair, maybe my comments may be redundant, but I wanna add a personal anecdote to this issue. I'm privy to the developers' contributions at Stone Gate in Fort Worth, closer to TCU, where I was working for 22 years, and I've seen the phenomenal transformation of the university neighborhood, and Hewland Mall, I'm in Hewland Street, and also the McKinney. My brother lives there, so I visit there often, and that project just amazingly, how it transformed the community, actually. So, it's a no-brainer to me, in the sense that I'm fully confident that, you know, Mr. Blackard would bring what he's promised to do, and I urge our fellow regents to be positive about this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beverly. Regent Loeb?
So, I guess I have a... I have a story about how hard this is. My neighborhood where I built my house is a couple miles away, but it has this odd system where there's no neighborhood association, but we all share a street together, which we each own our segment of, and in the deeds, we agree to coordinate replacement and maintenance of the street, and the street is 60 years old and needs to get replaced. So, I got to lead the effort to get every single person in the neighborhood onboard to sign the same construction contract and pay their money upfront, and it took us five years. And the joke in the neighborhood was, it was my hardest political achievement ever. But I wanna... There's one thing that people said that I wanna address, and that is that we get the increment from the neighborhood around the property. I have made that argument myself in the past, on behalf of deals like this. The problem is, it is no longer true. State law limits us to a 3% annual increase from existing property. So, as long as all the existing property in the city gets more than a 3% increase, and anybody who's gotten a property tax notice in this county knows that that happens pretty quick, the end result is, we do not get more money. We are pretty limited in how that works now. That used to be how it worked, and that was the basis for doing a lot of these tours. In fact, it would actually be better for us if we had a tours over a larger area where we did not give increment to the new development, but gave the new development the value that got gained by the old development increasing in value. And so I think that's important in putting any of these new ones together. I was struck by another comment that Mr. Moody... And I wanna thank everybody for coming to public comment. I've been on this board a year, this is the first time we've had anybody do public comment, and I saw that scrolling thing, and I was like, wow, that's pretty cool. Wish they had that at the city sometimes. So, Mr. Moody made a great comment where, you know, we're unsure whether... I mean, I ran some numbers based on what he provided last night. I think there's still a but-for issue here, because I don't know that this deal works, with or without us. But Mr. Moody made a comment about that his lender needs to see full community buy-in. And to me, this proposal is not actually full buy-in from the college. This is us saying, here's our tax rate, let the city manage it, and we walk away. One of the things that our chair said last time was, she wasn't sure, you know, how this benefited the college or its students. And one of the things that Mr. Blackard's report said is that one of the problems that they have is huge cost of construction inflation due to lack of skilled labor. Our business is providing skilled labor. And so to me, full partnership is us working on that issue with him. And through doing that, making it so after his project is done, if he can get financing together, that skilled labor still exists in this community and can go on and do other projects. So, where I am is, I'd be okay doing this if half the money went towards reimbursing for apprenticeship programs, and we could bump it to 95%. I know it's gonna take some money to administer such a program, so I'd be willing to bump it up to 95% for 10 years. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. I wanna... Are you referring, when you talk about the 3% cap, you're... The appraisal cap is 10%. Our actual rate, effective rate, is 8% cap, not 3. Community colleges have a different cap than cities and counties do.
But our return can only be a 3%.
All right, we're gonna talk about economics and that, because...
Yeah, okay.[1562.13][1562.13](Laughter).
Okay. So we have before us... I'm sorry, Regent Garza, you have comments? Comment or question?
I was just gonna make a quick comment, and I think that part of the thing that we offer our students is hope. And again, I'd like to take, I look at things positively. I also supported the North Beach project, and that project got torpedoed by even our public officials that said, yeah, we support a resolution to look for federal funds to try to help mitigate some of the flooding. And so, we had a public official, like I said, that peed all over the resolution. And so again, I don't know whether the project will happen or not. You can go back, and you can go history, over history, over history. Certainly, we, at the city level, we approved and we supported the Slitterbomb project with a name-brand product, and we all know how that project went. At the end of the day, I think that before that was attempted to get done, there was a lot of talk in the community by a lot of young people about, we didn't want this, we didn't want SeaWorld, we didn't want Slitterbomb, and we attempted to do that, and again, it didn't work, but still, we did everything we could to try to get that project to fruition and try to make it successful. So I think if, nothing else, if we do this, and it happens and it's successful, and I think it gives our young people hope, that good things can happen in this community. And so again, I'm gonna support, that's why I supported it last time, I think this is a better deal for the college, it also meets all the, checks all the boxes that my colleague, Regent Avery, mentioned. And so again, you know, I think that we can look forward to something good happening there. I also have to take my hat off to the residents in Faro Valley. When I was on the council, and I attended several functions there, their tenacity and their ability to support, even when things went bad, and there was lawsuit after lawsuit, to still believe in the project, I think is commendable, and I think that there's a lot of value to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Garza. From my standpoint, I do appreciate the developer coming back with a revised request that falls within our policy. I think that is very, very meaningful. I heard from, either directly or indirectly, just a handful of residents in the Faro Valley area, in addition to those that came forward today, and they were all questioning, why aren't we supporting this? So I do appreciate those that reached out. I think it's important for us to hear from our constituents when they agree or disagree with us, but I do appreciate those that reached out individually, as well as those who came here today. Thank you very much for your time to be here today. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to authorize to participate in Tourist Number 6 in accordance with...
I make the motion.
Per... That's based on what's on the screen? I was gonna read what's on the screen, but if that's your motion. Dr. Beverly makes that motion?
Yes.
All right. And Dr. Adami makes a second. Any questions or comments on the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to alter the motion.
You'd like to make a motion to amend? All right.
I amend to raise 90% to 95% and add the following, that 50% of the Del Mar increment shall only be available to reimburse the developer for businesses and contractors on the site, the cost of paid... the site, the cost of paid apprenticeship programs with current and recent Delmar students, and that the board will review the city's agreement prior to passage that Lenora mentioned.
Can you restate that? Or is there a second? Is there a second to his amendment? I do not see a second to his amendment, so that amendment fails for lack of a second.
Great. Thanks.
Any other questions on the existing motion? We've already had public comment, so I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. Please, Delia.
Dr. Adami?
Yes.
Ms. Sager?
Yes.
Dr. Babaly?
Yes.
Mr. Krul?
Yes.
Mr. Vaisa?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
No.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
So that motion passes seven to one. Thank you very much again for being here today. We appreciate it. Thank you, Regents, for your consideration. We will move on with our next regular agenda item, number five, which is discussion and possible action of acceptance of our internal audit report and revisions to our fiscal year '24 internal audit plan.
Thank you, Chair. As part of our internal audit process for board review and acceptance, the following information will be presented by Brandon Tannos, a partner with Weaver. Dan Graves could not be here today. The report will be a status of the current plan, and will also be to review and discuss recommended revisions to the FY '24 plan. To some background, the Board of Regents Audit Committee did meet on March the 26th. Daniel Graves with Weaver was present and reviewed with the committee internal audit status and recommended revisions to the FY '24 plan. So for consideration today is board action to accept the internal audit report and revisions to the FY '24 internal audit plan. At this time, I'll ask Brandon to come up. Brandon?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board of Regents, and Dr. Eskamia. It's my pleasure to present the status update for the internal audit plan for this FY. And we have some things to go over, some exciting projects and status, and talking about next steps. So quickly to go over these areas, we'll talk about the plan status for the one internal audit for accounts payable and disbursements. That is still in progress. And then also advisory consultation engagements, which include the safety and security advisory project, along with the college-wide reporting and data collection advisory status, along with those adjustments to the internal audit plan that Tammy mentioned. So first, the accounts payable and disbursements audit. This audit procedures are complete, and the results are being validated with those process owners and stakeholders. There's an exit meeting that is scheduled actually for next week. And so once that is performed and those items for discussion are validated, any potential recommendations for improvement, those will be finalized in the report and go through our report process, which is a collaborative review process, before coming back to the Audit Committee and this board for presentation. And so we anticipate that report to be done here in April, late April, early part of May, so that we could come back in the summertime for reporting the results here to this board. Just to reiterate that scope, it included evaluation of risk and internal controls related to Delmar's AP and disbursements process. So that included really the whole cycle for receiving, reviewing, and processing invoices. Include vendor invoice review, approval, and recording, along with vendor payments. And so there was two areas here that we also evaluated, which get included in the AP and disbursements, but not always. For example, is the travel and expense reimbursement. So looking at that process, along with independent contractors and how those are handled. Just to remind the board, we did evaluate the purchasing cycle before, and that has gone through follow-up and closing out those items. And so this is the other half, when you talk about your procure-to-pay processes. And so again, that one is being wrapped up and will be presented with results coming Next, the audit consultation over safety and security. So those procedures are complete, and those results are also being validated with the process owners and stakeholders. And again, a report is anticipated to occur here in late April. This one is consultation, so there will be recommendations for management's consideration. It's very different than a finding or observation that you see. It's more about helping the college, which we'll talk about another engagement soon on that. So those key functions and sub-processes included looking at the security compliance and reporting, emergency management, incident response, which is really about your emergency operations plan and providing consultation there, along with the establishment of DMC police and how that incorporates into that emergency operation plan. There's a last item here, is as that project has progressed, there was also some potential addition for additional assistance in reviewing the EHNS, so environmental health and safety at the college, as part of that emergency operations plan. And we'll talk further about that in a few slides. So before I go to the audit plan, I want to pause. Any questions on the status of those engagements? Great. So the FY '24 internal audit plan, as Tammy mentioned, we have some proposed updates. And just to give you kind of some background, is when we do a three-year internal audit plan, that's based on a risk assessment process. But throughout the year, prior to the fiscal year starting and throughout the year, we're always meeting and collaborating with management to assess where is the current risk to the college. This is how you ensure you have a flexible and adaptable internal audit function so that that audit plan's not set in stone, and we can meet with the risk of the college and really provide the most value. So that, of course, the first one with the safety and security, with expanded scope discussions, that is being completed here in April, May, along with accounts payable. But you will notice there is two that are tentatively rescheduled for FY '25. Those, financial aid and database administration ERP, is really revolving around your new ERP system, which could result in process changes. So you really want to wait and evaluate those processes once those new processes come into place with the new ERP. So it makes more sense to be able to do those once all that transition has happened. And again, with database and ERP, since we're going through a new ERP, you want to hold off and wait until that process is done. The next institutional research and reporting is a pivot. And so I have a slide that will talk more about that scope. But this one will be a more consultation about the college-wide reporting and data collection processes here, really looking at institution-wide. And this is going to be very helpful when we just had your presentations about HPA. This will kind of help look at some of those data points, put those in a consolidated area. And so those are for the main internal audits. The audit follow-ups, information security is being rescheduled due to some new requirements coming from the School Safety Center about cybersecurity, and those need to be addressed and focused before. Following up on that follow-up to make sure that all those new actions and current issues are being addressed. And then the bursar's office follow-up with some process changes there, while that will be scheduled to evaluate those once those are in place. So there's some things that are being rescheduled based on capacity and other things happening here at the college, and then some pivoting in some of those additional areas for assistance as you go through this new challenging time with HPA and other ERP issues, not issues, but things that are transitioning that we have to address. So I'll pause to see if there's any questions on those proposed changes.
I don't have a question, but I do want to compliment Regent Krul for your forward-thinking question during our HPA. One of the, you asked about the staff time and what it has taken to revise all of our reporting. I think this is an acknowledgement that our institutional research and data folks have been overwhelmed with that pivot. And so I think the, I think there's a lot of appreciation that we are going to push that internal audit to next fiscal year to give them a little bit of breathing.
So we can look forward to an amendment to your contract?
No, we will, you know, this is going to be part of our audit plan as we pivot and cycle, so our contract will remain the same, and that budget will remain the same. And again, being adaptable, working with the college on that.
Yep.
I can tell you, so rightly appreciated. Don't you just do it.
I'm sure they did. Lots going on in there. So if no questions, I'm going to go to the next. So the pivot from IRR is going to this more advisory consultation over college-wide reporting and data collection. This will be a consultation that will include some IRR, but it's not just them. It's really looking at all of the college reporting that we do, and everything that really goes from a board level and external party. So all those things that we do. And at the college, primarily, a lot of that is also decentralized. So it's not all done in one department. It's done by multiple departments and the administrative side, faculty side, that are putting different reports together. And this consultation really brings those parties together to look at the people, the processes, the data, and the technology really required to put those reports together and to really have a central tracking. Because right now, it depends who you ask for. And when you ask what reports are required in your area, when are they due, who's responsible for preparing, and where does that data live, that information is not centralized, and you would have to talk to somebody. So really, this project goes to centralize that. My team just finished this with another college, I know Dan mentioned that during the Audit Committee, where we found over 160 reports that were done at the college that were just board-level and external type of reports. Met with the cabinet for that college, and, you know, I think it was eye-opening, and I think it'd be very helpful for this college to take that. And there's also morphed into some elements of what is going to be applicable to HPA, and where does that data already live, and where can we make sure we have that in a consolidated manner? Now, again, the really, the results of this consultation is building out a matrix that really can have all that reporting information that can be filtered and eventually owned by the college for someone to manage, either IRR or somewhere else, to be able to manage that matrix and really keep an eye out what those are, when those reports are due, who are the responsible parties, and making sure that those are segregated duties as well so that if someone leaves, that that can be picked back up very easily. So we have that kind of planned to start here in May, pretty shortly, to work with those key parties. And so I will tell you that this one won't be as intrusive as an IRR audit. There is a lot more surveys that we kind of send out in collaborative to talk through that process, so it won't be as, you know, intrusive as maybe an internal audit would be. But it has a lot of value. Any questions on this?
Brandon, does this inventory include a prioritization of all of those different data points? So, you know, what's required? What is we want to know from our internal, but then what is, I hate to say, we've always done that? Or just because somebody was interested one time and they're so willing?
Nice to know.
Our prioritization has mainly been on state code, or what statute, or what is required by the co-board. Those are usually the prioritization. There's also, if it's financial aid-related or things like that, that we know we have to send out.
I know when we talked about this, it's more in line of the compliance reporting. It could be a compliance reporting, like, for example, earlier in the policy schedule, we looked at SB 17 and SB 18, 17 DEI, 18 tenure. There are new reporting requirements to the co-board based off of that new legislation that now we get to add to the matrix, to the list, because we have to, by September 1st of every year, we have to send in a certification form, we're complying with 17. And then on behalf of the board, we have to send in the policies and procedures to do with tenure to show we're complying. So those are two new compliance pieces. So that's kind of what we had talked about. It's more a compliance piece, but it's also, what does this board ask for in reporting so that we can make sure that it's on that list? Some things have to be reported to the board, and we just have to let an entity know that it was reported to the board, like the racial profiling through the police department. We're exempt, but we still have to tell the board that we submitted the report and that we're exempt. So it's kind of along those lines. Hope that helps.
Thanks, Chair. Any other questions on that project? All right. So I'm going to move to the next one with the expanded scope that was talked about previously with the wrap-up of the safety and security. So this is an expansion for advisory assistance to look at processes, to collect that data necessary for the development of the departmental business continuity plans that support the emergency operations plan. So this is working with the departments really to consolidate and put that together and have alignment to with the Texas School Safety Center. So that fieldwork for that expansion is also expected to start very shortly this month, and those talks have already started. So that is the update that we have provided for internal audit. I will pause if there's any questions, any other feedback for us.
Any other questions? Regent Garza, do you want to make the motion to accept the internal audit report and revise the audit plan as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Any, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second, Mr. Loeb. Is there any other questions or comments from Regents? Is there any public comment on this issue? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Next, we're going to hear our quarterly financial report from Mr. Garcia.
Oh, man, my legs are stiffed. Okay. Here we go. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board. The college is in sound financial footing. Oh, okay, just a moment, let me look for these financial statements. Okay, there we go. All right. So the college is in sound financial footing for the six months ending in February 2024. Looking at the, our two major operating revenue categories, state funding revenues is trending in accordance with the plan budget, with a reported value of $13.8 million or 51% of the plan budget. The other category of the revenue reported is trending better than expected with a reported value of $78.3 million or 89% of the plan budget. This is driven in part by property taxes offset by tuition and fees. So transitioning to operating expenses. Salary and benefit expenditures is holding steady relative to the plan budget of $39.4 million or 47% of the plan budget. Non-salary expenditures, the second category, is also trending in accordance with the plan budget with a reported value of $13.1 million or 41%, 45% of the plan budget. If there is no questions on this worksheet, on this report, we'll move on to the balance sheet. Okay. All right. So the college, again, is financially sound as of the reporting period, February 2024. Here are a few highlights. Cash and investment position increased through the end of the second quarter by $8.7 million. This is driven in part by the property tax collections. Performance appropriations receivable decreased through the end of the second quarter by $1.2 million. This is due to changes in state appropriations payment model. Under the new model, the college has received 75% of its annual performance funding through the end of the second quarter. Under the old payment model, the college would have received 43% of its annual state funding for the same period. Next is deferred outflow pensions of OPEB. This increased through the end of the second quarter by $4.4 million. This is attributed to the teachers' retirement systems, better-than-expected investment earnings, and changes in actuarial assumptions. Transitioning to the liabilities category. The first state appropriations increased through the end of the second quarter by $4.9 million. The change represents a portion of the state performance payment described earlier that will no longer be used, that will be used to fund the operations of the college over the next three months. Next is non-current liabilities. The college's net pension and OPEB liability increased through the end of the second quarter by $1.1 million, and deferred inflows related to pension and OPEB decreased through the end of the second quarter by $720,000. This is attributed in part to changes in the actuary assumptions and adjustments to the college's contributions. Finally, net position. Net position in OPEB fund balance increased through the end of the second quarter by $3.9 million. Again, this is attributed in part to strong performance in our state funding and property tax revenues. Current year net income available from operations increased through the end of the second quarter by $2.2 million. This is due in part to strong collection in our state funding and property tax revenues. Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board, if there are no questions, this concludes the presentation.
Any questions for Mr. Garcia? Is there a motion to accept the quarterly financial report as presented?
I move. I so move.
Who made the motion? Dr. Babaly made the motion, Rudy seconded. All those, any public comment on that? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Next, discussion of possible action on our fiscal year '24 pay adjustments.
Thank you, Chair. Due to FY '24 budget constraints, an employee pay increase was not feasible at the time of the budget adoption for that fiscal year, which began September 1st of 2023. At this stage in the FY '24 budget, administration has explored At this stage in the FY '24 budget, administration has explored options to provide some type of pay adjustments for those employees that were eligible September 1st of '23 for an increase if one had been approved. The presentation today reviews a proposal for FY '24 pay adjustments for eligible full-time faculty and staff, and requests consideration and approval from the board. So as I just mentioned, this would be for all full-time staff who were eligible for a pay increase on 9/1 of '23 and are currently employed, to receive a one-time payment through payroll of $1,000. That's before the applicable employee taxes are deducted. And they were also recommending all full-time faculty who were eligible for their one-year of experience pay on 9/1 of '23, and who are currently employed, will be credited with that one year and receive the pay component of $829. Now, the year of experience is one of the four pay components for faculty. As a snapshot in time, as I like to say, eligible full-time staff for the $1,000 one-time payment would cost approximately, and this is including employer taxes, $440,000. This $440,000, since it's a one-time payment in this current year, would not roll over into the FY '25 budget. For eligible full-time faculty to receive the one-year of experience pay, the approximate cost, including benefits, it does have an impact on summer pay because that component is part of their nine-month contract, which is used to calculate summer pay, along with the employer taxes, is approximately $305,000. That amount does roll into the FY '25 budget, since it is considered a part of their nine-month contract. So the total would be about $745,000. The adjustments would be distributed sometime in May of '24. So the proposal for the adjustments, the funding source. Through monitoring expenditures for the remainder of the fiscal year, additional revenue, as Mr. Garcia just spoke about our property tax collections, we're trending higher than when we budgeted last year. The one contested valuation settled, resulting in some additional tax revenue. And I also wanted to point out that the FY '24 contingency funds remain intact. Do I have any questions?
Mr. Krul?
Well, I know this is probably a little bit premature, but what's the outlook for some percentage increase for faculty and staff salaries in FY '25?
To be determined. We are, as Mr. Garza, I'll let Mark, Dr. Smith say it. We are hopeful.
We always keep it on the table. We always keep all options on the table. There are some other things that we can look forward to here in coming months that have to be decided before we move ahead, but we keep everything on the table always. We only take it off when necessary. You know, one of the other pieces too, if I may add, the one-year experience pay for faculty, although if left alone, automatically rolls over. There have been times where the board has, upon my recommendation, have removed that. And so there is that piece too, to go forward. But if you just leave it alone, it does roll over, as Ms. McDonald said. So lots of things out there. We're preparing for all scenarios, and we always remain hopeful, as Ms. McDonald said.
Any other questions? I do appreciate, you kind of went past it pretty quickly, but I think Dr. Eskemia and I had a conversation about this, and the bullet point on monitoring expenses, that you all have worked very hard to keep expenses under control. And so I think that speaks well to leadership and to looking for opportunities to create this one-time, or this pay adjustment, I should say, not one-time, but this pay adjustment. The board, I think, was very concerned about where we were with salaries when we adopted the budget last August. And so I would compliment you all for the hard work to identify a source for this and to allow us to do this. Any other comments? Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year '24 pay adjustments as presented?
So moved.
Make a motion by Mr. Lo, you are learning to jump in fast, second by Dr. Babaly.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you all. All right. The board is going to go back into closed session under Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with legal counsel, 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development, and 551.074A1, personnel matters. All right. The board has come back from closed session at 4:02 PM with no action items coming out of closed session. We'll look at our calendaring for the next couple of months. In May, we will have our board meeting on the 14th, oh, sorry, in April, excuse me. Next Friday, we do have the employee service awards, so we're going to ask if you intend to be there, please let Delia know. May 14th, board meeting day, May 17th, our spring graduation, and our June board meeting would be on June 11th. Is there anything else for our calendar? Seeing none, we are adjourned at 4:02 PM. Thank you.